Okay, we'll go ahead and call the City Council's main order. I would like to ask everyone to stand and join our side in the federal.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for voices at hands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Wells, can you please do roll call?
Craig Kershaw?
Here.
Matt Dyer?
Here.
Alex Holmack?
Here.
Scott Murray?
Here.
Wiley Sird?
Yes.
Well, has everyone given a chance to review the minutes from the previous meeting?
Make a motion to accept them as emailed?
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call vote?
Craig Kershaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Holmack?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Sird?
Yes.
Okay. Is Kurt, is Kurt in here? Are you going to discuss the repair costs?
No, I'll put it out.
Okay. You might have a little more input tonight. Okay, um, is Max here?
Yeah, he was here.
Thank you.
Okay. Max, you going to discuss the facade program, the applicants that we've had? Are they successful applicants from the facade program?
I'm really happy to see all people so excited about the facade program today. As you know, every year you guys give us fifty thousand. The Main Street, I mean, it's a city project, but Main Street Design Committee pretty much reduced the applications and kicked out, and then we come back to you guys to prove kind of excited. So this year there was a total of seven applications. I mean, the funding is usually fifty thousand, and this year that's asked for eighty thousand. So the committee put together a plan, and each of the applications are graded or scored. And so however their score came out, we kind of figured it out as a percentage stance so that everybody could get some of the money. It's a fifty-fifty grant. I mean, they have to do the other half of whatever they do within their work and those things. So basically, out of seven applicants, we give away your fifty thousand dollars, and we kind of scored it by how they scored. Some got eighty percent, some got not set eighty percent, sixty percent in that way. I did give you a paper. I think you have it in front of you. I know Jamie emailed it to each of you to review before the meeting tonight. And this is the seventh year of the program. We're hoping to do it continually. We hope the city will, next year again, grant us some money to help. It looks, downtown's thoughts look great, in my personal opinion. I think a lot of people think too, downtown's really coming around, looking fantastic. We thank the city and Main Street and for this program, putting it together and our committee. I mean, Alex Vandez, he's also on our team. He's sitting right here too, so.
You want me to go ahead and name the businesses that all received it?
You can.
Um, like you said, there were seven businesses. Famous Monsters Pizza, Yvonne Marie's, Two Brothers, Mr. Planners, Vinnie's, The Museum, and Bush Investment, which is the old Fifth Third Building on the corner of Madison and Second. So, it's a great program. Seven more businesses have received funding to improve the outside of their buildings. So this is great. I'm glad it's getting used, and I'm glad the council keeps approving it every year to do it. It's making a big difference downtown.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions, Grayly?
Anybody have questions?
Thank you for your work on it, both of you. It has been a great program, really has made a difference, and I, as one councilman, would definitely like to see it continue, so keep it up.
I think we need a motion to approve those successful applicants.
Make a motion to approve the applicants.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call vote?
Craig Kershaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Holmack?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Sird?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Max.
Thank you. Jamie will be sending you out a.
A word of honor to everybody who successfully activated.
Right.
So don't anybody tell any of them. Chief Corral, is he still out there? I think you want to discuss the UTV ordinance a little further?
Yes. Like I said, we're, I think we're doing, making some good progress on the, this UTV ordinance. And I met with the counselor last week, and she ended up sending me a rough draft of that ordinance, and I emailed it to you guys today. Just the purpose of look at it, examine it, and then maybe come back, the first meeting in April, see what you guys think, have any questions about it, glad to answer it. And then hopefully, if you do like it, or we need to adjust something, we can continue working on until we start making this a permanent thing here soon. On vacation, I was getting messages and stuff about when's this going to pass and getting nice outside. So I bet, we are making progress, I just want to do this right. So we get it done the first time and not come back a year or two later, hey, like we messed something up, can we amend this to this and that? So, check it out, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, and so the counselor there.
And just to kind of go off of what Chief Corral has said, he, and I commend him for the amount of effort he's put into researching this type of ordinance. I know that he has sought out various ordinances from other communities and has put in a lot of time, and he and I have both met with DNR officials about the regulations imposed by the DNR and how they may relate to our potential ordinance. So, if you have the opportunity in the next couple of weeks, take a look at this draft and please feel free to email or call me, any concerns or potential corrections, revisions, anything like that. So, thank you.
I just want to say, thank you, Lenny, for taking your time on this. I know you have discussed this with many other cities, what they do, what they've, what their problems were, what their faults were, and I think you've done a great job making sure that we get it right the first time, so I appreciate that. I mean, it's all about resident safety, and I think you're doing the right thing.
Yeah, just check it out, and if you have any questions, call me or email me, I'll be glad to answer them, and we can address it the first meeting in April.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, did you have anything else before this? Can you hear either? Nothing else before this? Okay. Then the last thing on the agenda is to consider, the consideration of Amendment Ordinance 130.02 pertaining to slaughterhouses. Do you want to discuss how we're going to do this part of it, or it's where I can, or...
I'm happy to. With regard to this, the format for this portion, we have set aside time for public comment and an opportunity for IO properties to be able to restate their request to council for consideration of amendment to this ordinance. At this time, we have received, we had put out sign-in sheets for public comment, and we've reserved two minutes per signature line. I'll be keeping time on my watch. We'll start with IO properties, giving them an opportunity to talk, and then open the floor up for the public comment. And once public has, the commentary period has ended, council will discuss and the floor was as needed.
Yeah, so would you, IO's going to go first?
Yeah. So it's, the representatives from IO properties would like to come forward.
Anne, I didn't, I didn't hear the rules. The agenda that we have received this morning indicated that we have twenty minutes to speak. Can I, can I consume ten minutes of that and then leave the remaining ten minutes for members of our team?
Yes.
But this isn't, this isn't public comment. This is what, these are the people that are asking for the amendment to the ordinance, so they're going to state their case, and then it'll be open for public comment.
Anne, would you ask them to please put the microphone close to their mouths, because I can't hear very well, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Madam Clerk, Ms. Razzo. My name is Tom Trent, and I am here on behalf of the project team. We recognize that the last two weeks have been incredibly challenging for you. Therefore, I want to start by offering a very sincere and heartfelt thanks to each of you for going the extra mile in terms of the due diligence that you've performed. It has been nothing short of amazing, and the citizens of this community should be very proud of you. It is not an easy thing to do to take information in the public domain, on social media, and try to make of it. To put it kindly, there has been a lot of misinformation spread about this project. You instead took time, each of you, to become educated about the project and the process. You have seen examples of harvesting facilities in the region. You have visited Coldwater, Ohio, to learn about the families that are spearheading this project. Some of you rolled down your windows at other harvesting facilities to smell the air and to talk to the neighbors that reside next to facilities such as what we're proposing. Many of you have watched the videos of the process and seen the state-of-the-art equipment that is used in the harvesting process. I believe you have seen how clean this process is. Several of you have toured the facility, and the list goes on. Again, we are very grateful for the extra effort that you have put forth. We think you've learned through that process that this is simply a great project. It's good for the city. It's good for the regional economy. It's recession-proof, it helps local farmers. It creates jobs, the project is clean. There are no nuisance odors or noises to speak of. The operations are fully contained. Housing projects can be seen next to facilities across the region with home values in excess of seven hundred thousand dollars. And perhaps most notably, it's part of a national movement to localize meat processing. Ironically, on March 1st, the night of the BZA hearing, the President of the United States made mention of this exact issue, and he lauded the USDA's efforts to spur competition by supporting and engaging small and medium-sized meat processors. Decatur is part, can be part of this national movement. Now, because my time is limited, there's a fact sheet in front of you that is intended to provide you with fact-based, objective information about the project. Now, in addition to the project's virtues, we cannot lose sight of the fact that the city's Honorable Board of Zoning Appeals voted in favor of the special exception by a margin of four to zero, and on each legal point, roll call votes were taken. The BZA placed stringent conditions upon the use, and the project team agreed to those conditions. I know the BZA and some members have been on the wrong side of comment in the public domain, and candidly, that's unfortunate. They took the facts that were presented to them and applied them to the legal test that's set forth in your ordinance. They fulfilled their statutory duties. Anyone in their position would have done the same thing if the intent was to follow Now admittedly, the ordinance in question has put this council in a very difficult position. And in our view, there are legitimate problems with the ordinance. I've shared these with Anne as a professional courtesy, and I'm simply offering this information for the same purpose. If anything, should this issue arise in the future, you'll be better informed. First, a violation of this ordinance as it is currently written is a penalty of not more than one hundred dollars. The ordinance does not expressly grant the city injunctive relief, and let's be honest, a hundred dollar fine is a mere slap on the wrist. If this used to be mobile, as the comments on social media would suggest, surely your forefathers, your predecessors would have adopted stiffer penalties. Second, the ordinance has selectively picked one industry to eliminate without any explanation as to why. The policy question should be, what's the rational basis to exclude this industry compared to other uses that also cause external noise and odor? Or even better, what about this state-of-the-art facility is worse than a sexually-oriented business which is expressly permitted in this district? The city's code of ordinances already establishes guidelines for smoke, particulate matter, odor, fumes, gases, glares, vibrations, noise, fire hazards, water pollution. With these controls in place, why single out specific use and declare it outright prohibited? We also believe the ordinance is overbroad. If you read the ordinance carefully, it says in the very first sentence, and I quote, "No person within the city shall slaughter or dress out any animal." This ordinance doesn't just prohibit slaughterhouse operations, it actually prohibits the killing of animals within the city of Decatur. Can you imagine the implication of this? And what is a slaughterhouse? The ordinance doesn't define the term. In our view, the term slaughterhouse is negative and antiquated, and reinforces misconceptions and stereotypes. As we have said on many occasions publicly and privately, we are going to follow the Temple Grandin model for the humane treatment of animals, and we are further going to use the most standard equipment to ensure against pain and suffering. I will conclude by saying this: I am extremely proud of Riggs Florence, Tim Pearson, and the rest of our team. Riggs is twenty-nine years old, but brilliant and mature beyond his years. The way he has communicated with members of council in this community is not something any of us will soon forget. The team has left no stone unturned. The process is clean, it's safe, it hits on many of the points set forth in the city's comprehensive plan. The project will create high-paying jobs pulled from a talent pool of one hundred thousand people. It will help local farmers by reducing their costs in when times are tough like they are now in view of the near five-dollar a gallon gasoline price. The project will be resilient against a possible recession, and it will keep our grocery stores stocked with locally sourced beef. If I've learned anything in my twenty-one years of practicing law, I've learned that you cannot have a glass jaw in this line of industry. Some of the things that have been said are false, some are misleading, and some have been outright hurtful. And yet, we are happy to have been part of this community dialogue. We have resisted the temptation to go on the offensive and have held our heads high. I told the mayor the first day that I met him in Kurt Whitty's office that we intended to be respectful to the community, and I believe we have done just that. We hope that you allow this project to proceed, and I promise, I promise, we will in turn be excellent corporate citizens and follow through with all of the commitments that we have made. Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Madam Clerk, Ms. Razzo, thank you for your time. We really appreciate being here, and we'll see the floor back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Nine minutes, and fullback. So you have ten minutes for your team. Or, ten minutes for your.
My name is Rhea, and I am for this project. I am a farmer's daughter, I am a farmer's sister, and I am the farmer. And hopefully, my son will be the fourth-generation farmer. We all talk about, at this day and age, of buying local and being local. Currently, our cattle go to Plainwell, Michigan, for the most part, and about seventy percent in this area go to Plainwell, Michigan. That is owned by JBS United, who is owned by a foreign company, who just paid fifty-two million dollars in price fixing. So where did that fifty-two million dollars that they paid, where did that go? Who did they steal that from? That would probably be us, the farmer, and we're never going to get that back. So we have an opportunity right now to send our cattle here, in town. This facility's going to be one-tenth the size of JBS in Plainwell, Michigan. This really is a project for the local farmer. We were dairy farm before, and they told us the Dean's, or the Walmart plant in Fort Wayne would be for the local farmer. It was never for the local farmer. It's for a farm that is a, that's not a local farmer, that's not a family-owned farm anymore. This actually is an opportunity for the local farm. I'm curious as to how much of the tax dollars from Adams County Farms is provided to this county. I'm going to say it's probably quite a bit, because Adams County is a very big farming community, and we pay a lot of taxes. My other point is, people have said, hey, let's build it out in the county. Okay, well, anytime we want to do anything in the county, we have to send a notice to our neighbors within a mile radius so that they can have input. We don't get that same notification as a farm if somebody wants to come out and build within a mile radius of us. So it's still not going to happen out in the county, because nobody wants it there either. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you call more quickly next?
Good evening, Councilman. Colton Biggle with the Adams County Economic Development Corporation. The EDC wants to be a trusted resource for any business or individual trying to grow in Adams County. That's our mission, that's what we're here to do. And so this company, as it is our mission.
Colton, can you speak into the mic more, if possible?
Sure.
Thank you.
As it is our mission at the EDC, we want to work with any company who's looking to grow and invest, and so that's what we've done. We've been engaged with this company from the very beginning, helping them through the process to get them to the point where they're able to flourish. So, what I wanted to do, and what they've asked me to do, is just provide some of the economic numbers to go along with this project. What we've done is we've run a report, this is an economic impact report. The system we use is a regional program assessment system, and we take all the numbers that they've given us from job creation to investment, all of those items, and kind of run them through a system that really shows what the economic impact would be here to the city of Decatur and Adams County. So just, I'm going to run through some of these. Some of them you may have already heard before, but just want to run through them. So new direct jobs created over the course of two years and beyond, we're talking two-hundred jobs. The initial number that they've given you is a hundred and three, that's the first year, so that's what you can plan on. New direct payroll over those two years with those two-hundred employees will be about nine million, seven-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars per year, is what they're anticipating. So year one, we're talking four-point-eight million dollars in payroll. That breaks down to about an average payroll per employee of about forty-six thousand dollars. Total capital investment that you're going to see from this company and this business is about twenty-three-point-eight million dollars, fourteen-point-six in the first year, and then throughout the years, as all businesses do, they're going to have to retool different machines, get new equipment, that type of thing, so they're going to be continually investing. They're estimating around seven percent annually. Total economic impact over the course of ten years, when you look at the jobs they're creating, the tax base, everything that goes into this, whether that's people shopping at restaurants, buying homes here, all of those factors kind of put in and run through the system, you're looking at nine-hundred-and-seventy-nine million dollars worth of investment, or worth of impact over the course of ten years. That's a big number. The way that breaks down, direct jobs, again, over two years, two-hundred, direct jobs are those that are going to be directly to this company. Seventy-nine jobs are estimated different suppliers, so they're creating new jobs even outside of their own business into other supplier entities. Sixty-four consumer jobs, total payroll supported over that ten years of all of those jobs created, one-hundred-and-thirty-seven million dollars. Income tax, payroll tax, those type of things that are going to be coming directly in here. Estimated property tax over the course of ten years is a total of about five-point-six million dollars. That'll come into the taxing district, which is the city of Decatur, Washington Township. The county income tax, so the money we're going to see come in proceeded, that's about one-point-six million dollars over the course of ten years. Looking at, I know that Tom had mentioned the labor, the labor pool, a thirty-minute drive is what we ran, so what are the, where are the individuals coming from? We estimated a thirty-minute drive, and there are about a hundred and four, a hundred and four thousand individuals within that thirty-mile radius that they could potentially pull from, that may have some experience either in general production or even specifically food processing. Wages, I know a lot has been better on what the wages are. They're estimating across their entire facility, an average wage of twenty-three dollars per hour. Different positions will start at different rates, as all businesses have, but that'll be the average across the entire company. That is above the median wage for this type of facility. Other types of facilities, you look at the median, median earnings, it's eighteen dollars and thirty cents an hour, so they're well above that. With that, I will say, I talked to my counterpart in Ohio, as many of the city councilmen have done and gone, seen facilities similar to this. I talked to my counterpart in Coldwater, Ohio area, had nothing but glowing things to say about this company. And again, one way or the other, that's not really for me to make a call, but what I can say, growing recommendations from them, I'll say personally, in my dealings with this company over the past year and a half, or past year, this company has gone above and beyond to really engage, stand some of the issues that people may have with it, and try to talk to those, engage with elected officials, do all they could. So I just wanted to add that in, in my experience, they've been great to work with, as Tom said, just, you know, commending Riggs, Tim, the whole team. It's been a pleasure to work with them, and, you know, from an economic standpoint, this would definitely have an impact to our community.
Two and a half minutes remaining.
Tim, you want to have Rick speak for you? We hold the microphone because people are having a harder time. No, the one on the stand, if you would hold it, it really helps others. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Brent Doctor, I'm an architect and a farmer. My original intention was not to speak, which is why I came in last second and signed the paper. I noticed a lot of farmers, some of them friends and neighbors of mine, in the lobby. It seemed like a couple dozen to me, they're not in the room, and so I felt compelled to say a couple of things, at least point that out so that you're aware, but there are people in support of this project. But there are people in support of this project that appear to be mostly in the lobby. I will make just a few brief points. One, the site is perfect for this use. All of the utilities are just right for this use. The orientation, the prevailing winds, all of that is correct. Couldn't find a better site, in my opinion, that's already standing. Along those lines, it was an ice cream plant. It was shut down as an ice cream plant. One of the things that I've done, well, the thing that I've done professionally for the last 20 years as I design food processing facilities, I work on ice cream plants as well. And I know that the forces that caused potential closure of that plant are the same forces that will pretty much ensure it won't open back up as an ice cream plant. So it does need to find a use, and it's perfect for this one. There have been at least 41 trucks at a time on that site when it was an ice cream plant, as evidenced by aerial photos. There may have been more, but you can prove at least 41. These folks are planning on up to 14 a day, is their estimate. So there'll be far fewer truck traffic, less truck traffic. There will be no cattle outside. They're unloaded inside the building. So if there's a concern about hearing or seeing animals, that doesn't exist. The pay is really good.
Mr. Doctor, you are at the 20-minute mark for IO Properties. You can finish your thought.
All right, last statement then. Harvest facilities today are clean and humane. They are not slaughter, as they had been called in the 70s. Thank you.
Thanks.
So now we'll have some public comment. I will read the names and ask people to come up. Obviously, we do not know if these are all against or for. We will find that out when they speak. I'm going to ask that everyone else remains quiet. There's been some comments, kind of blurted out from back there. I've asked that those stop and let people talk, and please be respectful. Along the way, this hasn't always been respectful. I've heard things, read things, I've had a lot of emails, phone calls. And I love to hear everyone's opinion, I really do. That's why I ran for this position, because I want to make Decatur a better place. And I truly care what everyone says. So many people were saying that these minds were made up a long time ago. That I had my mind made up. I mean, there's too many that know my opinion more than I do. I guess, I don't know, I don't understand. But what this group has went through over the last couple of weeks is very difficult. They're trying to make the right decision for this community. And believe me, I asked them two weeks ago to do your homework, try and find out as much information as you can. Don't make a decision, let's figure it out. And they have done that. So what they have taken through emails and phone calls and stuff is ridiculous. It's not the Decatur I know. We do want to hear your opinion, but we can be respectful. That's what we are in Decatur. We're a great community to get along. And I would love to see that. That's what I want to see going forward. So we will start with this list?
Yeah, go ahead.
To go off of what Mayor Rickard has explained, I'd like to offer a little bit about the procedural history as to why we're here and what the purpose of this meeting actually is for what council is considering. So this application was presented to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and we received it on about February 10th of this year. As is customary for the BZA, once an application is received, it is placed on the agenda at the next available meeting. Our first available meeting was February 15th. Unfortunately, that did not give us the appropriate amount of legal notice required. So it was placed on the March 1st agenda. At that point, Aaron Hirely, with our Building and Zoning Department, prepared a list of adjoining property owners and a public notice, which was submitted to the applicant, who then sent that notice to the adjoining property owners, and notice was placed in the newspaper at minimum 10 days in a public hearing. On March 1st, that public hearing was held. The Board of Zoning Appeals is a quasi-judicial committee. They are responsible for making decisions very similar to a judge does in a court of law. They look at the evidence that is presented during that hearing, and they formulate an opinion as to the evidence that is presented. And that's their job, and that's what they did on that night. At that point, and at that hearing, it had been determined that one of the three requests being made by the applicant was not able to be heard by the BZA because that code section was not under our current zoning laws. It was within our general code of ordinances. And it's Title 13, Chapter 130, Section 130.02, which everyone has become very familiar with these days. That is why it has been put before city council. City council must amend that ordinance in order for the conditional approval that was granted by the BZA to take effect. In addition to the Board of Zoning Appeals giving conditional approval subject to city council amendment of this ordinance, there was a long list of other conditions of approval. These are stated on both the handouts presented by IO Properties. It's also presented within the minutes of our BZA meeting, and are part of their approval. But it requires that delivery of animals be inside of the facility, that all holding pens will be indoors, that the hours of operation shall be maintained from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., that delivery of animals may only occur between 5:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., that limited to paddle harvesting and any other type of animal that they may consider working with in the future. They have to go back to the Board of Zoning Appeals to request any additional approval of that. They must maintain temperature-controlled environments. They must maintain walls that are well-insulated and washable. And they must maintain all levels of standards set forth by local, state, and federal regulations. Those conditions were based off of the application itself and were presented in conjunction, or to the applicant in advance of the hearing because they served as non-starters. So this isn't anything that is out of the ordinary, this is customary. If they're not willing or able to live up to any of those conditions of approval, then there's no basis for the BZA to even rule upon it. So that was exchanged and discussed. In the event that this could be potentially approved, are these conditions that you're willing to abide by in addition to the city council, to the code of ordinance amendment? So all of that being said, it brings us to March 1st city council meeting, when this was presented originally. And council at that time felt that it was necessary to table the matter in order to do further investigations. They did not want to make a rash decision, and took additional time and brought us to this evening. So I just wanted to...
February 22nd, there was a pamphlet at Penn Homes.
Ma'am, if you are on the list, you'll have a chance. But that's what brings us to this evening's meeting. So I just wanted to make sure that it was clear what the process had been up to this point. So thank you.
Okay. We will now take public comment. And Mary Byer is the first on the list.
If everybody would please hold the microphone to your mouth. It really helps everybody and people out in the lobby to hear. And Craig, who is off-site, he really needs that to hear. So please, everybody do so. Sorry, Mayor.
Hi, Mary Montgomery Byer. I live here in Decatur. I look around and I see a town that loves their town. I see the people that live in this town that love their town. Now with a show of hands, who here is artist? Yeah? Artists? I see a lot of you out there. I know a lot of them have been spearheading this event, Decatur, Indiana, artistically inspired. And we're here tonight to inspire you. I know a lot of the people here that came up to speak on behalf of IO, they were talking about the farmers, but they don't live here in our town. They live outside of town, how much it benefits them. Please take that into consideration, that all these people here who love Decatur and live in Decatur are here tonight to say, please don't do this to our town. Thank you.
My name is, sorry if I get this wrong, Norman Burning.
I'm Norman Burning. And our address is 16820 US 27, Decatur, Indiana. And our fund's been founded since 1842. I'm the sixth generation there of livestock farmer. And I'm talking about a lot of livestock farmers out here that when we have to sell livestock and that, it has to be traveled to Green Bay, Wisconsin, and go out to the Pennsylvania line. And that's a lot of time for the livestock to be sitting on trucks. I feel it's not humane and that. So having a processing plant closer would be really beneficial to the animals and everybody else. And it's, this would be recession-proof. If we go into that recession, you have a lot of businesses here that's going to take it on the chin. And I'm just saying that you better look where your food's coming from. So that's really all I need to say about that matter. But I probably represent probably 25, 30 farmers, livestock farmers in the hallway out there. I mean, we don't, we're not public speakers. So we don't go running petitions, we don't put banners up in your face. But we do have opinions about how livestock should be handled and that. Because we do have livestock. They say about mooing and this stuff like that. We have a dairy farm. You can't hear a cow moo there. If you hear something moo, you better look to see what's wrong. But otherwise, all day long, you don't hear nothing. Because they're content. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Greg Gage.
My name's Greg Gage. I'm 61 years old, I'm a lifelong living in this town. And whenever I listen to seeing that it's going to be a slaughterhouse brought within city limits, it really concerns me. You know, this may be the greatest and best everything. You know, they might have best equipment. But until it is actually here, and it's in the operation, and the proof is in the pudding, then you'll find out, does it smell in the summertime? My wife went to college at a place that was downwind from a slaughterhouse. And she said, in the summertime, you couldn't hardly go outside. And that concerns me. You know, I'm a son of my mother who still lives, 92 years old. She only lives about a quarter of a mile from this location. Tyler knows exactly who I'm talking about. And, you know, she's very concerned about it. And we got the Deer Creek subdivision that is basically next-door neighbors. The only thing that separates that is fence row, some scrubby bushes, that's it. That would be their backyard. You know, sure, I'm convinced that this is a great thing for this city. I'm not opposed to it, but I'd rather see it outside of town, not inside of our city limits. You know, I think many people here would agree with me on that. I'm not opposed to it, I'm just opposed to where it is. Okay? You know, whenever you guys go to bed tonight, just please, go to bed, put your heads on the pillow, knowing you made the right choice. Thank you.
Next, we have Wayne Porter.
Good evening. Mayor Dan Rickard, city council department heads, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Wayne Porter, and I'm chairman of the board and vice president of Porter, Inc., owners of Thunderbird Products and Formula Boats. The Porter family has employed the city of Decatur and has given back to this community for nearly seven decades. For me, I've lived in the community for over 65 years. I love the town, as the people previous before me had said, we love this town. I so much love this town that I spent eight years on city council, eight years on the border works, served mayor pro tem for four years, served on the Adams County Economic Development Corporation board for four years. And yes, even served on the Board of Zoning Appeals that we're here in this discussion tonight. While everyone has an opinion, my conversation tonight comes from experience from BZA. Ladies and gentlemen, this should never have passed out of BZA so quickly without full and careful consideration of the implications to zoning and ordinances. This fast-track move delayed community feedback until now. The city of Decatur's BZA application specifically asks for a statement of hardship for the applicant. The IO application attached a project narrative which described more than an ease of use for an existing vacant building, which would be more than a convenience and definitely not a hardship. If IO were to build outside the city limits, right where a building belongs, outside the city limits, they would be all well with arms and in the law. In regards to the NDA that IO Properties had kept, the details of the project was held within the city officials, BZA, Economic Development, and also city council. This delayed the facts from coming forward.
Mr. Porter, you've reached your two minutes.
Thank you very much. I certainly appreciate you voting no tonight and keeping the existing ordinance. Thank you.
Brian Jordan.
Hello, my name is Brian Jordan. I am a resident here of Adams County. I want to share a little bit of a story with myself. First of all, I want to stop and think. The business is in town, period. Rev, whether it's the Porters at Thunderbird, spent eight years at Thunderbird. Worked every day for them, great people. They provide a lot to this community. But the unfortunate part is, in my life, where I went after the recession in 2009, I ended up in agriculture. And agriculture became a huge passion of mine. It became a passion in my kids' life. It became a part of me for the 4H and the community, which I serve a lot of these parents behind me, their children, through a 4H program. And today, as I was driving in a truck, a livestock truck, talking about the same situation that we're talking about right now, I couldn't help but think about the kids and what sustains a community, period. A community is housing, food, jobs, and investment in your youth. And so today, on the livestock side of things, I feel my heart is pretty heavy with this because it is an economical impact on this community. And I feel like it is a very, very good choice for this city to see it. Now, there's been a lot of slur, and I've heard it all night long. I've heard the slaughterhouse, slaughterhouse, okay? I work in this industry every day. I drive to a so-called slaughterhouse, okay? It's not a slaughterhouse, it's a packing house. It packs meat, it puts it on your table. That's all I have for today.
You've reached your two minutes. Thank you.
Next, we have Scott Porter.
Good evening. Thunderbird Formula employs 380 team members in a great work environment with top pay and benefits. We've invested heavily in our facility as both a great place to work and a beneficial addition to Decatur. The BZA decision to change a well-established ordinance against the slaughter of animals within the city limits to accommodate IO puts our investments at risk and will have negative impacts on its surrounding residential neighborhoods and businesses. Because a proposed RLO, Regulated Livestock Operation, or Slaughterhouse, is such a short distance from our factory, shifting winds may blow processing and wastewater treatment smell our way. IO indicated that the operation will have some odor with intolerances, a quote from their representative. Our factory circulates air, pouring air makeup from the west end of our building to the east. When doors are open in warmer months, odors will flow through the factory, necessitating closed doors. A daily estimate of cattle deliveries, which is anywhere from 10 to 20 a day, trucks via 28th Street means up to twice that many passes past the west end of our building. Traders will manure past our factory every day, and prevailing westerly winds will push those smells right into our workers' cars in our building. A huge selling point for our customers is to visit the factory to watch their boats being built and meet our team. The impression we make is at risk from potential smells and noise of the livestock trucks going by. We're upset that this decision, a decision of this magnitude, was made so quickly and without a proper discovery period for input from Decatur residents and businesses. You represent the citizens of Decatur, and our input should be strongly considered in this proposal. We're asking you to vote no on this. For over 60 years, the builder family and-
I'm sorry, you've reached your two minutes. You may-
Okay. We're not anti-business, we're not anti-slaughterhouse in the right location away from high-density areas. We are against a proposed location for this. Please vote no to preserve the future of Decatur, respect the concerns of those affected you, and protect the investments of our residents, their homes, and our businesses.
Next, we have Calvin Shaw.
Hi, I'm Calvin Shaw. I live at 334 North 10th Street, Decatur. My concern is clientele that usually follow these places. I moved out to Lexington, Nebraska. It is a good little town. IDP, Packing House, moved in, and with the clientele that followed that within five years destroyed that town. Now, in five years, are you guys going to be able to sit with your grandkids and tell you how great Decatur is yet? Probably not. But they can tell you it's going to sound great, make it sound like the best thing since a slice of bread, but if you put lipstick on it, it's still going to be a pig. That's all I got to say.
Colin Sulking. Hello, I'm Colin Sulking. I lived 2640 West Deer Run Trail. This will be going up in my backyard. I know that currently this is zoned as an I-2 business zone, which was previously stated. What would be stopping? Another bigger, or another slaughterhouse from coming into Decatur into one of those I-2 building zones? That goes straight up Patterson Street, directly into the heart of town, that goes all along the railroad, all the way up to the bungee facility. Lastly, I just want to leave you guys with a final thought. How would this impact your families? How would this impact your children running around in your backyard with a slaughterhouse right there? Thank you.
Tom Holman, I think he might be outside. Is he calling? Drew Walker. Is there a Drew Walker out there? He's coming this way. Oh. He's coming, I see. I think she may be right. I think he might have been here for the BZA earlier and signed up on the sheet. Okay. Darlene Vassal.
Thank you. My name is Darlene Vassal. I live at 445 South 1st Street, and I am concerned with the people that live right close to the slaughterhouse. The appraisal from the IO company, I read over that book, and I think it has a lot of holes in it. They said that it doesn't, the property will not change in burial. They gave examples of houses close to slaughterhouses, and then a comparable house far away from the slaughterhouse to show that, yes, these two values compare, but what they didn't show you was that if you research even farther, you find out that all of those houses are in a very depressed area, and I proved it by finding a good school rating of 81% free and reduced school lunches for these areas. It's like saying, this house in Gary is going to be the same price as this house in Gary, wouldn't you know? All the houses in Gary are going to be that type of price. Another thing I found in that same document is that the appraisal actually discredit several times. He says that he did not actually visit the sites, out of four sites, he didn't go to any of them, he didn't smell any of them, he didn't stand down under any of them, therefore his evaluation was incomplete. I think he says, own evaluation. Every few sections, he states that his work was from the direction of his client, so he eliminates his own document. This picture that I handed around earlier is Cooper's farm in St. Henry, Ohio. I heard that there was a beautiful subdivision across the street from this, and I just couldn't believe it, that there would be a subdivision across the street from a slaughterhouse up here. On the top picture, right in the back there, it looks like there are trees, or maybe a castle, or something. You can't even tell what it is back there because it's so far, like, it has a street, it has grass, it has a huge parking yard, it has a sea lane blocking that slaughterhouse. At least picture-
Vassal, you've reached your two minutes.
All right, the bottom picture is that lady's house.
Thank you. Linda Guyer.
Hello, I'm Linda Guyer, and I too do not go around neighborhoods and do petitions, stand on corners, or sit in front of young people, but here I am. I have lived on 500 North for 50 years. I'm a walker, and I have walked by those factories for over 20 years, whenever the weather was permitting. I know what it's like to live out there. I've done it. I chose to live out there. The factories can be smelly or noisy at times. It's industrial park, it's expected. It doesn't smell like cow farms. When the zoning board met two weeks ago, they asked themselves three or four questions, answered yes to all, and voted this through to the City Council with a clear conscience. They had checked all the boxes yes, and as one minute, they told me directly, "The city won't pass it. There's a code. We have a slaughterhouse in city limits. We can't." If you're going to ask yourself questions, does it bring jobs, fill an empty building, bring in taxes? Please ask yourself, jobs for who? The best-case scenario I've heard so far is Amish. Why is the slaughterhouse going in our city limits? How about Monroe, Burn, or Geneva? Do they have a code? If by chance the Amish doesn't work out, and they can't come up with workers for all these, would they be busing in these workers to take these hard jobs that pay a little bit less than the factories we have now? I'm all for giving the low-income a hand's up, but please, hasn't Decatur done our fair share of helping the low-income? If this is, if this factory will bring more low-income, we just don't need it. Please think of your children and grandchildren. Even one thing lurking in a place like this. If GM had a small division of its industry, or Tyson, or any other company could use this building, would you be looking at changing our city code? No. You're doing it for the convenience of IO. Please don't be so desperate to fill an empty building.
Ms. Guyer, you've reached your two minutes.
Thank you.
Now we have Norma J. Landis-Guyer.
Can anyone hear me?
Yep.
Okay. First of all, I would like to apologize to our Honorable Mayor and our City Council members for anyone who was in opposition to this, and if any citizen has been rude or threatening to them, that's not what we want to do. People are desperate, though. Desperate people say desperate things and display their desperation. What is the big rush? From the mayor's signing of the nondisclosure to the obscure indistinct notice in the local paper on February 18th, it appears very important information has been withheld from our citizens. Just yesterday, I talked to a 13th Street businessman who had never heard of this. Most citizens have less, had less than 30 days' notice of this. What is the big rush to change our longstanding ordinance that protects us as city residents? If our City Council members have heard from more polls than in favor, aren't you under some obligation to vote as your constituents are praying to God that you will do? Will you tell us how many opposition and how many in favor received? Please vote no on changing our city code and allowing a slaughterhouse to operate in Decatur. A nuisance in the law means something offensive or annoying to individuals or the community. Offensive means unpleasant, disagreeable, repugnant, distasteful, disgusting, revolting, vexing, and repulsive. A slaughterhouse is all of those. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to clear up one little comment. I've heard it a couple of times about the NDA. Nondisclosure agreements happen quite often. A lot of things, when you sign this, you don't even know, you have no idea what the project even is. That's what happened. Once you sign one, you have to remain quiet. There's business reasons why they do that. It happens all the time. Anything that comes through economic development normally has a nondisclosure because they're competing with other businesses and they're not letting it out. It wasn't anything that was hidden at all. It was something that has to happen legally.
Tom Callens.
My name is Thomas Callens. I live at 1440 Scrugg Street. Most of the questions that I have have already been answered. Am I correct in saying that just 200 cattle per day? Does this involve then hogs, or pigs, or sheep, or can be brought in, or is this only for cattle? Can anybody tell me that? At this time.
If they wanted to process any other animal, it would have to go before BZA again to get permission granted. Am I correct in that?
Correct.
Dan?
The only, the only use is, it's conditionally approved at this time, is for cattle harvesting.
Okay. Thank you. I'm concerned about the neighborhood, not just Deer Run, but all the other homes in that area. As the lady said before, I was a kid on Patterson Street growing up, and the feedlots down there were terrible. And I'm not saying this new one's going to be that bad, but it was bad. So is the smell and everything perfect? I don't know. We'll see if this goes through. But I got another question. Is the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, since this is in city limits of Decatur, have they been notified to come in and say, hey, this is good, or this is bad, or are we waiting for whatever? I don't know if anybody's contacted the Environmental Protection Agency. I haven't heard. That's why I'm bringing it up. Within the city limits.
Man, can you address that? Do you know?
Sir, I can tell you that IO Properties has indicated that, or has represented to the city, that they will be very likely one of the most highly regulated businesses in operation, based on all of the-
Who said that?
I would let, I would defer to Mr. Trent to answer on behalf of IO Properties.
So there are all sorts of laws and regulations that go-
I know that, but does the EPA know that? Have they been notified?
Sir, that the EPA has jurisdiction over this specific-
The EPA has jurisdiction over the whole country.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. So maybe we better check into that before we jump the gun. I thank you for listening. Thank you.
Tiffany Mendez.
My name is Tiffany Mendez, founder and organizer of nonprofit organization registered to the Adams County Recorder's Office, and representing the best interests of our community as a whole by researching, organizing, and advocating for the prevalence of our high standard of living, quality of life. We've grown to nearly 200 members and believe the time given to the five people is not enough time to research the negative environmental effects this business would bring. Negative environmental effects. We have organized and compiled our experience and evidence in the form of scientific research studies, which support the fact that due to the lack of federal regulations, updated EPA standards, and repeated violations by three-quarters of slaughterhouses statistically, that this business would bring the opposite effect as intended, and will reduce our environmental safety and health, contaminating our water and air, and adding undocumented, illegal, and felonious numbers to our community and economy. Earth's like potentially average and likely are vague, and may have created distrust in this community for this company, who still does not address the environmental concerns we bring up. This site is perfect- This site is perfect. Being perfect for them does not make it right for us, and I would remind you respectfully, your primary duty is to the well-being of the community as is ours. The people outside are there because of the code, and I did place a call to the Environmental Protection Agency the first week that this happened, and I'm waiting for a return call. I made them aware of the issues here. Thank you very much.
Jean Brun.
Hi, I'm Jean Brun, and, um, we have a petition that we're passing to each of you that contains the signature of seven hundred and forty-two, uh, either Decatur citizens or people who will feel that they will be impacted by, uh, changing this city code. There is also an additional fifteen that I would like to give to the mayor. Um, here are fifteen that were collected tonight. Okay, as the petition states, we would like the city council to keep city code one thirty point oh two as is, um, and you have already heard the statement of, uh, of the, um, city code. So, we, the undersigned city of Decatur and area residents, petition the Decatur City Council to enforce and uphold city code one thirty point four oh two that prohibits the slaughter of animals within the city limits. Animal slaughter operations naturally introduce issues of, sound, smell, slaughter usage, concerns animal waste products, disease, following home values, and thereby undermines the comfort and welfare of our citizens. There are many unknowns as to how this type of business would impact our community, and it needs to be thoroughly investigated. We recognize that this type of business exists in our country, but the accepted location is rural and not next to a subdivision. It does not fit into our city's comprehensive plans. I'll give you a moment to look over these, these names. Some of them do have, uh, out-of-town, um, addresses, but I would say for the most part, that eighty, ninety percent are the people who voted you in. So, I'll give you that moment. Go and serve with them. Become accustomed to them. They became accustomed to you, and they voted to bring you in. So please, represent them. Thank you.